Welcome to this, what number meeting is this?
Oh.
Oh.
The 128 crew is here.
Welcome, welcome to this meeting of the Milton Planning Board. What number is it, Emily?
We don't know.
We don't know. We've had so many meetings that we've lost track of what number it is. But in any event, in any event, I'm Alex Whiteside, the chairman. Why doesn't everyone else at the table introduce themselves?
I'm Ed Duffy, member.
Brian Furze, member.
I thought you were going next.
Fine. Bill Clark, planning director.
I'm Morgan Edmond to the planning department.
Emily Ennis, member.
Okay, we have three sets of minutes to approve. Do people have them?
Do.
Yes.
They all look good to me.
I had no changes.
I had no changes. No changes.
All right. So why doesn't, why don't you, Emily, vote to approve them?
I move to approve all three sets of minutes as written.
Why don't you say which ones they are?
I will as soon as I pull them out. October 9th, October 21st, and September 25th.
All right. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
The minutes are approved now. It seems to me we should meet at the end of December, on December 30th, which is a Tuesday. Just because the warrant is going to be closing and who knows what might come up.
Yeah, I can meet then.
All right. And then our regular meeting in January would be?
January 8th.
January 8th. And presumably, if we decide that the Thayer Nursery application is adequately complete, that would be the first, the first hearing session.
January 8th, is that firm?
Yes.
January 8th is firm. December 30th, I think, is firm too, because everyone here sort of nodded.
Should be able to make it.
All right. Citizens speak. What, citizens who want to be heard by the planning board on a matter of interest to the board or a matter of interest to the citizens are welcome to, welcome to say a few words. Any citizens want to, want to speak? All right. Seeing none, we will go on to the agenda. And the first item is zoning articles for the May 2015 town meeting. And as people recall, the October town meeting was designed as a place for zoning. We loaded it up pretty well last October. And we haven't, I don't think the planning board has any particular articles to present in the spring, and town meeting may be relieved of that. However, Marion McKeatrick and Ned Corcoran have come up with a piece of zoning called non-conforming planned use, planned unit development. And I, they, did people receive the three-page draft? And I said that they can, they can make a presentation on it if they like. I mean presumably, I guess, they would, if they had their druthers would like the planning board to present this rather than do it as a citizen's petition. But let's see what they have to say.
Jumping right into the fire, huh?
That's the way the agenda was, was scheduled. Bill likes to get things moving fast.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to do this. Ned Corcoran and Marion McKeatrick, we've worked on, actually had a more recent version, but this is a good placeholder. And I did a little PowerPoint that I thought would help sort of frame the purpose. There are half a dozen to a dozen maybe of properties in town that are, sort of have non-conforming uses that in many cases have deteriorated, or may appear to have deteriorated over time, and are either undersized lots, dense tight areas that are difficult both to reinvest in the business and make it difficult, I think, for abutting property owners as well to invest in their property. So I pointed that. So as a purpose, it's really to try and find a way to establish a general bylaw provision that would encourage reinvestment and quality redevelopment on lots which contain these pre-existing uses. I think it's one thing to think about a general, a specific bylaw approach to a particular property if we're talking about a large piece of property where there's a significant development, with a significant investment associated with it. And I know that the condominium subcommittee and this debate on whether and how that should be done. I think small properties don't lend themselves to that approach because the cost and the time associated with that type of a redevelopment plan can be prohibitive if there isn't a basic template that a developer could follow or a property owner could follow. So anyway, you, yeah, next. So I've shown four. There are some others out there. The first sort of is the, what you might call the McKean Oil Property. It's the 485, 487 Blue Hills Parkway. It is roughly opposite the bottom of Guile Road, which is at the, the road that extends down through the high school. It is once, it was formerly the Blue Hill Ice Company. There's an old ice business on the property. It is butts on two sides, one side by Blue Hills Parkway, on the right north side and the rear by town-owned conservation land. It's the Pope's Pond area. Pope's Pond is directly behind it. And in fact, a portion of the property, the rear of the property is within a hundred-foot setback from the wetland area. There is a, on the southerly side, there is a, there are several residential properties. And on the property currently, there are approximately, there are three large buildings. One facing, has three units in it, apartments. There is a fourth apartment in the big barn structure. There is a, the southerly end of that is a sort of a barn, is a dwelling. And there's the barn structure. And then there, to the rear left, is the old ice house, which also has a dwelling unit in it. And the owner is desiring to redevelop it in a way that could sort of reinvigorate it. All of the buildings are historic in terms of the town's bylaw. And to encourage some reinvestment, I think, would, it would be helpful to have some new zoning.
Is the owner's name that?
McKean.
They know.
Patrick McKean, McKean family.
My neighbor, yeah. Thank you.
And they use it for part of the McKean Oil Business. They store equipment, maintain equipment on the site. They don't receive and deliver oil, but they do still offer, you know, some office space and equipment. So Cheryl Tagheas has been retained as an architect to look at a potential reuse plan. And we, she and I are working with them on that. Next, Bill. The next two, show us a frontal, you see the big three family in the front on the left. There is a large lawn, really nicely manicured with a, with a mature stand of trees on the front right that you would want, I think, to, to preserve as part of a redevelopment plan. Property under, under current zoning is in Residence B. It could be subdivided into four lots. It's a little less than, than two full acres. We think it could do a four-lot subdivision. Or, you know, some sort of a condominium conversion, although the town's bylaw with respect to condominium conversion doesn't really get at this. So some sort of a bylaw approach that would allow a reinvestment in the property to take advantage of the historic nature of the structures, preserve that open space, clean up the property as it exists within the setback from the town, from the pine tree, excuse me, from the Pope's Pond. All of would be beneficial, I think, and something that the town would benefit from. Next. And that's just another look into the property from Blue Hill, Blue Hills Parkway. Next. The next, and it's tight to see, but is the Tedeschi Food Shop on Houston Avenue. So. It's not strong enough. That's why. But in the middle, and it'll drop down into some street level views, Tedeschi Food Shop, it's part of a series of properties in that Houston Avenue, Thatcher Plain area that are all part of an old 1880 subdivision. Small lots. The Tedeschi's takes up about 90% of its lot. I think the side yard setbacks on each side are maybe a foot or two feet. The rear yard is about a foot, two feet. And there is a sidewalk in the front that you can step onto and walk into the building. There is a, there are older homes next door to the, immediately to the right is a gentleman named McMahon, who I am representing, who simply is not able to reinvest and redevelop his dwelling. It's difficult for him to think about doing something with this commercial use next door. If a bylaw were in place, it's possible to think that those two lots could be assembled, that a newer, more modern Tedeschi's type market could be developed, that parking would become available on the site as opposed to on the street, and that you could create a neighborhood market presence that would sort of replicate what was there originally. Milton was built out years ago, neighborhoods had markets because we didn't drive. And in fact, that was historically been a market vocation. And so if you drop down, Bill, you can see how close the, the neighbor on the left and that tree standing on the right is my client's property. There's a narrow driveway opening. Next. You can see again sort of how that, that's the front, that is the only area of the lot that's really uncovered by the building. Next. That's just moving over. That's the McMahon house. The driveway, it's a narrow driveway, cars, and there's very little sort of real on-street parking cars parked, often blocking his driveway for short periods of time, but it's a nuisance. It's difficult for him to get in and get out. And so it is a, it is another one of those sites where Tedeschi's owns its lot, it's probably happy, doesn't, it may be happy, it may like to reinvest, and we'll be reaching out to them to see if they'd like to do that, if there were a possibility of a bylaw change. But I think they have no incentive to do anything other than to keep the inside of the store clean, to monitor traffic as best they can, but they're going to stay there in its present condition for the foreseeable future. Next is sort of the corner, just calling it for the sake of this slide, Knights of Columbus Corner. It's at the corner of Brook and Blue Hills Parkway. There are several non-conforming uses on several lots. It's a tight corner. You have the old Knights of Columbus building, you have the Milton Food Mart and the auto service shop on a combination of lots. I did represent a developer who sought to, a variance to redevelop the Knights of Columbus property and was denied. And so a rezoning would have to consider why the denial, what should be done, but a rezoning of that area that might encourage a complete reinvestment, I think is something that would benefit the area, would benefit the town. Go next, Bill. That's sort of looking across the intersection and see the, the food mart on the left, the white facade, and the, the old gas station on the right. Next. It's now a frontal with the, with the food mart and the gas, the old filling station. And then if you go again, you can look in past the food mart to the single-family dwelling that's on the property of the KFC building, and then the KFC building itself. And then one more comes around the corner, and this is the Laurel Road property that abuts on the easterly side of the Knights of Columbus property. Unfortunately, despite fairly significant efforts, my client was unable to get access to this property, which might have made the redevelopment more acceptable. But nothing good, I don't think, is going to happen to any of those properties until unless there's some sort of zoning that's going to recognize the need for reinvestment and create some sort of way, vehicle to get there.
The gas station in business now?
Yeah, it's not, it's not a gas station. It is a vehicle maintenance and repair shop, and it operates there now. They're two different uses on one lot, owned by the O'Neil family. Next. And then the last is, so this is the corner of Randolph and Reevesdale, where there's the other Tedeschi and what's currently the O'Neil Success Real Estate, that contained a former gas station. There may or may not be some lingering issues with respect to gas tanks from the gas station in the ground. I think there's an activity in use limitation on the property, which is an impediment to reinvestment.
All the tanks are out.
Tanks are out, but.
There is an AUL on the property.
So, and across the street, Marion has represented the developer who's put in the hospice. But it's, it's, you know, it's a property that may or may not seek significant reinvestment unless there's some vehicle that can encourage that. So next, just quickly show the building with the large parking lot off to the right. And then the next view is just looking back sort of across the parking lot. And so those are four properties that I think are, will have a difficult time sort of reinvesting in themselves. And it strikes me that whether, whether it's this zoning vehicle or something like it, Mary and I have worked on something that's a little more recent, and so would share that for next discussion. But something that would encourage reinvestment, that may think about allowing some amount of density of residential in conjunction with the redevelopment of the business use, would provide, would spur some of that. The model that I used for this is the Central Avenue Business Planned Unit Development Overlay Zone we started with. You can see on this, I've got a base number of units of 1,000 square feet. That really came out of that. I'm not su, we don't think that that number's appropriate. Our more recent drafts have sort of break it down sort of by residence zone, and we think that maybe one lot, one unit per 2,000 square feet and a resident C would be more appropriate. Seventy, you know, one per 7,500 square feet and a resident B, and maybe one per 10,000 or 12,000, 15,000 square feet or something and a resident C. It would be a, the densities would, would step based on the type of, the residence area that you were located in. And maybe it ought not to apply to Residence A Zone. In any event, but there are, you know, you can think of a couple of op, well, you know, there are a couple of locations. Maybe the Salamondo Lot on Blue Hill on Route 138, behind Canton Avenue might be a candidate. And so, you know, if that were a candidate, what would be the right density of housing if you're going to put a, you know, mix of use in there? But the thought is that these, you know, we haven't adjusted any of our zoning other than to create, we've done it in the business zones, at least with respect to the planned unit developments. We've done it on, with large residential tracts of land. We really haven't done much else in town. And huge, and I know I've pounded this stump for a long, for a while now, large swaths of this town would develop before zoning. Zoning was enacted presumably recognizing that a lot of this, a lot of the town is pre, is non-conforming. But I'm not sure that at the time that was enacted, anyone foresaw that there would sort of be a gradual diminution of value of the properties that were subject to the pre-existing non-conforming. That really all they can do is kind of hold on to what they have. There's no ability to sort of expand. There's no incentive to expand. And so what I think is, what happened is that those properties become, continue to diminish. As one tenancy ends, the next one comes in. There's no incentive for the new tenant to reinvest the way that we might do if it were a new and reinvigorated use. And, and so you see, I think, what has happened at the Milton Food Mart. You know, that's just allowed to be what it is. Tedeschi is what it is. Tedeschi in other places, look at Curtis Square and on Adam Street and East Milton, just far, just over the line from where it is. I mean, that is an attractive new use. If that model were available to be placed, obviously with the, with neighbor input and addressing and identifying concerns, I think that that type of a use could become a real benefit to a neighborhood in this, in this community and would enhance rather than see diminution of values around it. Needs to be done with sensitivity, needs to, needs to be completely thought out, but I think it's the time to start to do that. And I'd like to encourage the board to adopt a recommendation for this town meeting in the spring around something like this. If not, I'm prepared to get 10 signatures and, and put it on as a citizen's petition for the sake of having public hearings in this winter, for the sake of having a discussion at town meeting. And if it's not ready to be adopted, maybe it gets referred back to study and it comes back in the fall. But I think to simply do nothing, you know, it'll be two years before we start to have that dialogue again. And I think that would be, it would be a disservice to the town to do that. So with that, I'll stop and Marion can add her two cents, and then we can take whatever questions you have.
Well, we're going to suspend after you make your statement and do our hearing for the plate. And we're going to pick this up at the end of the meeting again.
Okay. Well, just for now, what I'd add is, the reason I have some interest in this is because I live near some of these sites, and I have from almost 40 years. Some of them were doing very well when I first moved here, but they're not doing so well now. And I'm, I know Mr. McMahon, and he does indeed have a difficult problem. He has a very odd-looking, odd-shaped house. It's on 9,000 square feet. It's next to a Tedeschi's. He can't, it's not worth it to invest in the house, and he can't do anything else but house on that lot because it's not big enough. And he's next to Tedeschi's. So the natural thought is, is there some way these two lots could work together better than they do now? So my view is, the impetus for this is that we have pre-existing non-conforming business uses. Those sites exist. The question is, if you were going to try to encourage development somehow or improve, I wouldn't say development, improvement of these sites, do you need to allow any expansion or change in the business use? Or can you look at adding to the business use and the ability to do residential use, but do it in a different way than you can in, in these residence districts? So a little bit more dense, because that provides the money, basically, to invest. I mean, it gives enough of an incentive, so maybe a landowner will want to invest, whether it's with the business or separately, but in conjunction, they'd have to do a plan. So that, that's what spurs it for me. The problem is that, living in one of these neighborhoods near these businesses, you know, what are you going to change it to? How much would it be able to expand? Would you allow a change in the business use? Or would you just say that these are sites that have a non, pre-existing non-conforming business use, and that that allows you to take advantage of some kind of different zoning? That's what you have to think about. And right away, you get questions when you look even at our bylaw draft or this draft, because this draft does allow a change to a different business use, although excludes certain uses like power repair business. There are lots of other questions, too. But the, the bylaw needs to be written, whether it does it properly at this point, so that what it's doing is providing an opportunity to submit a site plan to the planning board for a different, a little different arrangement of, a combination of housing and business that looks much better and is a much better site for the neighborhood when it's done. That's the way, that's the result that you're trying to achieve, in my view. That's why I think it's worth looking at. It's not so easy to do that, because, you know, you have to try to get a combination of zoning provisions that are good enough so that there is some kind of financial incentive, but not so big and so different that nobody will support the zoning. And the way to do it, to think about it, is take what we've written, and we'll send you another draft that we've done some changes in. Look at the sites and think about it. And anybody who wants to do that, you know, in Milton who's interested should do the same thing. And there are more sites than what we listed, but those are the sites that currently are sort of asking for investment. But there, there are lots of non-conforming uses, but it's not necessarily true that a proposal could be made that would improve the neighborhood and improve the site for those other uses. So they might not even ever be able to take advantage of this or not be able to take advantage of it now. Nevertheless, it's important to know what, where the sites are and what they are, because you have to test the zoning by looking at the sites. So that's, that's what I recommend. And I think it's kind of interesting to go around and, you know, take the zoning or take the second version that we've sent to you and see how it works on the site and whether you think it might actually offer something. Because it's going to be difficult to defend unless you can be convinced yourself that it, it would offer positive substantial benefit to the neighborhood.
Okay. Now, Bill, the plate. We are going to start the public hearing for site plan approval at 10 Bassett Street, played at Milton Marketplace.
Good evening.
Good evening. Introduce yourself. You're being recorded and televised.
Thank you. Michael Modestino, I represent the McNosa 1983 Family Trust, Michael McNosa trustee.
I'm Anthony Maggiore. I'm a builder and contractor that's done quite a bit of work for the Milton Marketplace over the years. And if there are any questions in that regard, that's why I'm here.
I also have Suzanne Lombardi here. She is the, going to be the proprietor of the, of the plate, and she can answer any questions about the business. She's here with her husband, Andy. I also have Steve DiGiusto here. Steve, if you could stand up. He's the general manager of the, the fruit center of the Milton Marketplace, and he can also answer any questions that you may have. If I may. This is a, a plan to reconstruct the roof area on the rear of the existing structure at Milton Marketplace. There's an existing dormer out back where the kitchen is, and that dormer is about 20 feet wide. The plan is to replace that dormer with one large dormer, a shed at the rear of the building. Each of the new areas to the right and to the left of the existing dormer will be about 15 feet wide, 14 feet, I believe. There'll be no new additional floor space. The whole idea is to create some height space in order to have food preparation in, in the kitchen, activities being conducted there. There'll be new walls and siding, and the windows will match the existing dormer. It will enhance the architectural look of the rear of the building and make it consistent and uniform. I know that Mr. Clark, in our preparation for tonight, had indicated to me that an individual had come forward and had some concerns about odors coming out of the kitchen of. had come forward and had some concerns about odors coming out of the kitchen for the last proprietor of the business on that second floor. And Ms. Lombardi can address that, but it's my understanding that there was an antiquated ventilation system that was installed in the previous kitchen and it was not up to code. It was up to code at the time, but no longer up to code. It didn't have an intake valve. And it's my understanding from Ms. Lombardi, and she can explain that, that there is a intake fan and it's going to be made completely up to code and it shouldn't persist as a problem. I think the problem was before that occasionally, because of the lack of intake fan, the cooks would open up a window and some odors would come out. There's also not going to be a fryolator in this kitchen, so that can take care of some of the odors and smells that might, might come out of the place. And from a, I have the copy of the plans. I believe you each have one, perhaps? Anthony Maggiore is from Maggiore Construction. I think he can explain to you in a little bit more detail about the construction of this new shed area or dormer.
Yeah, basically, it's working area now. We're not expanding any floor space or square footage. The issue is, you walk to the outside wall and it's a headroom issue. It, it goes down to four feet is what it boils down to. So what we wanted to do is lift those two sections of roofs so they could work more comfortably in that area. And as far as the structure is concerned, yes, keeping it in line with the existing dormer, we had done, actually, I don't know many, how many years ago, but that was an add-on at one point, that existing dormer. That wasn't in the original structure when we built it. I was involved in the building of the structure 27, almost 30 years ago. I actually was the lead contractor on the project and worked with the owner very closely. The, by adding the dormers, it just keeps a clean line going across the back. It'll update some of the, as you know, over time, siding and things start getting deteriorated a little. It'll clean that whole back wall, give it a nice, clean, fresh look. It'll allow us to bring some of the energy codes up to standard, to today's code as far as insulating and that type of thing. It'll just clean up the back quite a bit and give them a safer working environment at this point. Like I said, it's very difficult for them working in that, in that space that they're working in now.
Thank you.
I don't know that I have anything else to add, unless you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions, board members? Or, that being, yes, Ed.
Do I understand correctly, no further seating, just what it is now?
No further seating. In fact, there's going to be less seating.
You say you're going to have?
Yes.
We're going to address odors? Come on up and address them. Or address whatever you want to address.
Thank you very much. So, yeah, I think, as was said before, we are-
You can introduce yourself again because I, I got to take down your name.
I'm Suzanne Lombardi. I currently run the plate at 27 Central Avenue and I'm entering into-
You're also a resident?
I am a resident. 26 Pierce Street. Thank you, Bill, for reminding me that. We are neighbors. And I'll be able to walk to work, it'd be fantastic. So I'm entering into a lease for the space that was held by the Milton Marketplace Cafe. So that restaurant operated for 16 years. We are replacing a lot of the equipment, bringing it up to code, up to compliance. We're working with a professional kitchen consultant on that equipment and so what's already been specked so far is a state-of-the-art ventilation system. So it's going to be a larger unit. As was mentioned before, it'll have an intake fan which is up, you know, everything will be up to code, brand-new, and is no different than what Abbey Park has recently put into their restaurant. It's also a larger version of what I have that we're running over at 27 Central Ave at the plate. Again, we are in a real residential neighborhood there and, you know, we've had no complaints or of odors or anything like that, so.
Okay. Questions, board members?
What's that?
Is this an location staying?
It is, so we'll be operating both. Yeah.
Is the ventilation system going into where the dormers are being added?
Nope, it's actually going into the same area. We will, in the dormer area that's being talked about, there'll be a upgrade in a larger commercial dishwashing machine. And so it needs some height there and then for people to operate it, of course, to-
I think the piece that is most important is, right now, the ceiling height in there is four feet nine inches. The new height will be seven feet nine inches. So you get seven feet versus, you're getting a three-foot head-
Any, any expansion of the business hours?
Yes, we went before the zoning board and got approval to open at 6:30 a.m. on-
As opposed to?
Monday through Saturday, as opposed to 8 a.m.
And that hearing was on November 12th?
Were any neighbors objecting to that?
We had no objections, no.
No, I think we had one favorable neighbor and that was, that was it.
Bill, can you just clarify what we're voting on?
Site plan approval. It will be just the site plan approval.
It has nothing to do with use?
Nothing to do with use, nothing to do with parking.
And could you, four foot nine, does that currently count as square footage or is it applied to a, you know, half or, does the four, what's under the four foot nine, is that currently square footage or does it meet a ratio?
Only the second floor, so we don't have to worry about it. If it was the third floor, you'd be talking about floors. Here, we're not talking about floors.
Okay. Right. Okay. So it counts as square footage today? It's not changing the square footage? That answers my question. Thank you.
You would be thinking of cubic, not square footage.
No, I know, sometimes when you get to the dormer area, they start to create a ratio for you, so it's four foot nine, okay.
Right. Which is what I'm talking-
Great, thanks.
All right. Who out in the audience has any questions or comments on this application? Seeing no one. Ed?
I would just like to say that I'm there 365 days a year. I walk down and I walk back home, every day of the year, no matter what.
Ed? You enjoy?
I'm just saying-
The view is okay?
It's a great place.
All right.
You'll be able to get breakfast earlier?
That's right.
I, I, you know, I, it seems to me that this is a good application and we should approve it.
I would move that the board approves site plan approval on this application.
As shown, as shown in the application and plan?
Yes.
And we will, and you authorize Mr. Clark to sign a written decision after review by me?
I do add that to the motion, yes.
All right. It's a good motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Do we have further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So we've, we've approved the site plan.
Thank you very much.
And we will give you a written site plan approval, which I think you're going to record.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Good time.
Not at all.
Thanks, Paul.
Now, Marion, why don't you tell us about the situation at 1383 Brush Hill Road? You're welcome. Thanks for coming in.
I'm Marion McCetrick and I am the attorney for the applicant for this A&R lot at 1381, 1383 Brush Hill Road, which is on a right-of-way. It doesn't have frontage on the road. So I want to start out tonight by saying that we would like to request a continuance to the 30th of December. And I have a letter here to submit to the board requesting that. The reason for the continuance is, we filed our plan on Friday and lo and behold, the planning board was able to schedule it for tonight. But the neighbors have not had enough time to talk about what's been filed and, you know, hopefully to come around and decide to support this. There are different views and there are some details and issues. And we really tried very hard in the last two days to communicate quite a bit, but it has not been sufficient. And, you know, I appreciate the prompt scheduling because the applicant has a very tight time constraint and she has had a lot of delays trying to get her plans done. She has the plan now. I've actually brought a revised plan to you because the original plan didn't show the frontage on the street, on the right-of-way. So that's two large copies and seven somewhat smaller copies. But there'll be time to make more copies if you want and also to make other changes if you do see other problems. So tonight, I've already communicated to neighbors that I'm requesting the continuance and that I didn't expect that we would have a hearing tonight, I mean, a meeting tonight. So what I'm asking the board to do, I'm certainly happy to answer questions, but since I told the neighbors that we were continuing and I don't want to-
We weren't going to have a discussion. I think that we should, we should do just what you asked and continue this matter until the 30th.
Thank you.
And, and thank you. Because talking with neighbors is always a good thing to do.
It is, and it's very important. We hope to have a good results then, but, you know, we'll just see how we do and we'll work on it.
Well, we, we, we also do.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, thank you.
Can I have that letter back?
Yes. All right. So now we've done the, let me just say, I'm going to pass out the resume of our new assistant planner.
I just sent that round to everybody as well.
What?
I just sent the announcement around to everybody again.
Oh, all right.
Having heard that we hadn't had a new planner.
I think that you're going to, you're going to like him.
How old is he?
When does he start?
You can't ask him how old he is.
How old do you think he is?
But he's late twenties.
Thank you.
Maybe thirty. All right, thirty, I'm being told thirty, okay.
All right.
When does he start?
He starts soon.
He graduated from college in 2006.
He's going to the, he's at the, his name is being brought forth to the personnel committee tonight. It'll be approved by the selectmen if it gets approved by the personnel board tomorrow night. Therefore, he could start as early as next Monday.
Good. A long list is set for him.
This would be good. We, we have a zoning matter for him to chew on.
Can I say something?
Yes.
Planning board didn't have much input here.
Had some input.
You were on the-
I was on the input committee. I, you know, I, we, planning was important. We, we made sure that, that planning would not be left out of the, left out of the equation. I think that people are going to be, are going to be pleased. And I certainly am pleased, so.
Forward to meeting him.
All right. On the 30th.
On the 30th.
Exactly. Good. Now, we're going to do a completeness review of the Fair Nursery application for a landscaping, landscaping, what is the landscaping, I did again, I'll look it up. Bill didn't have it. Landscaping, business use. Landscaping business use. Completeness review of the application. And you all received the application last weekend.
Yes.
And hopefully you have access to a copy of the zoning. And we're here to determine whether or not the, the application is adequately complete so that we can, we can advertise it for a public hearing on January 9th, right, Bill?
January 8th.
January 8th. So what do people think?
I thought it was much better than the original one. I think they put a lot of work into answering many of the concerns that we had expressed at the previous meeting.
I think it was better. I think it could be better still, but it does seem to me that at this point, the input of the public and the input of the board is going to, is basically, it's time for that input.
Yeah, I absolutely think that both we and the public will have additional questions. The question that we have now is, is this complete enough to meet the requirements of the zoning, knowing that as we go through the public hearing, as we inquire further into what this means, we have the basis to do so in the application. And I've said, as I said, it's a much better application than the first one that we received was, so.
So what we would intend to do would be open, have a hearing on the 8th. And then my feeling is that we would probably continue to do it on a two-week basis until we have a, until the hearing is completed. In other words, go, and we will devote a large segment of each meeting to, to this. So that is the, that is the proposal. We think that it's complete enough to make it a market for a hearing. And so we will prepare an advertisement and we will-
Start the process.
We will start the public hearing on the 8th.
January 8th, Al?
January 8th.
The only topics for that evening?
Well, no, it's, we'll probably have a few, well, we're meeting on the 30th, so we're going to try and, try and clear the 8th, more or less, for-
Right.
I have it, thank you, Al.
Yes.
Also on the 8th is the Falcone site plan approval.
Okay.
For the new restaurant.
Busy night.
Good to know. Start the year off with a-
Long meetings.
Right. Nothing wrong with that.
The Falcone site, the, the zoning board isn't meeting until the 9th.
All right.
Marion, yes?
You have a chicken and the egg situation with that because the zoning board really wanted, well, kind of wanted to know what the planning board said about site plan issues because they were getting a lot of questions about site plan.
And we offered to put it on tonight.
But that wasn't possible because we, you know, we had, I mean, we would have had to, the next day, had the full site plan application in. And our plan, they already have full plans, but there are certain things that go in a site plan that aren't on, weren't on the plans for the Board of Appeals.
We did, we did, we were, we did make an effort to have a hearing tonight on the Falcone application so we could, in fact, communicate with the ZBA, so.
I mean, they didn't require it. I'm just explaining to you that that's why we said, okay, go ahead if you can schedule it beforehand, that's fine with us, you know?
Maybe we should do it on the 30th.
I was just thinking of that, actually. That makes sense.
Can you be ready for the 30th?
Maybe two weeks, I believe so. I really need to be in touch with them tomorrow.
Do we have enough time to advertise it, Bill?
Is there, yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
It's Wednesday now. April 8th.
Wednesday, yeah.
We've been thinking that we might be on the 8th, but it wasn't definite, so, of course.
Well, no, I mean, if the Board of Appeals would be interested in our comments, it does seem to me that we need more than one day.
So if we do the ledger-
You tell me when, you know, when you need it to-
Next week and the week after.
If one of those-
If one of those could go in either the Globe or the Ledger and then we put the other in the Times.
We've got the ad all ready to go.
Oh, that's true. Well, you do have to officially, I mean, you're supposed to have the application, the
Right.
Plan. The site plan.
And it is, you've got your 14 days, you could do it on pretty quickly.
Well, it started on the 30th and then if there's anything left over, we can take care of it on the 8th.
Right, and also doing Falcone on the 8th with another hearing on the 9th.
Yeah.
It's going to be painful. I mean, we'll do it if you want.
Right.
Whatever you want.
That way we can devote most of the meeting on the 8th to Thayer. Yeah, I think that would be good for the first night, so.
So, when do you need material? I mean, what's the deadline? It's soon, I guess, but I just want to get, I'm going to have to talk to them tomorrow.
You made the application in, when the ad appears because it'll say the application's on file in the town planning office, so--
Okay.
You know, we would hope that--
So the first ad--
It was.
Right. Yeah, okay.
Okay.
We were almost going to turn it in before anyway, so I know it must be--
All right, Bill, I think that what you have done--
Thank you.
You've indicated that we have, we have a go here.
Well, we have to get one into either the Globe or the Ledger and the other will get to the Times.
Yeah.
And we'll just be--
The Ledger is probably cheaper, but I don't know.
It's, it's actually not.
Globe is cheaper?
But we'll figure it out, yeah. It's easier to.
Really?
We'll figure it out.
So we'll do Falcone on the--
Big time.
I know, really.
Boston Metropolitan Newspaper.
It's because they do it online. I will get with Marion and the Falcones tomorrow and figure out--
Okay.
What that date will be with, of the application.
Okay.
All right. Now, we're going to have a, I think that we've disposed of that.
Yes. So Falcone probably on the 30th and Thayer on the 8th.
Now, we've disposed of Thayer for the evening.
Yeah.
We're now going to have a preliminary presentation of site plan approval for Steel and Rye.
We're actually not. We're going to postpone that because it's, we have some issues to work out with the building commissioner on need and size of the project.
So we're postponing it?
If we have to, we'll come back at the, it was supposed to be before we went to site plan approval. We may not need site plan approval, we're working out the--
It may not be site plan approval, what about the parking?
There is no change in the parking, there's no change in the seating. That, the, the square footage is what we're working on now and--
If it's under 800?
Right.
All right, well, you, what are they going to do that doesn't need site plan approval?
If it's under 800 square--
What are they going to do?
Basically what they're doing is putting in a chimney on the outside of the building that is for a flatbread chimney, so they'd have a wood fire inside.
So the people up on Milton Hill can get that nice aroma of flatbread baking?
Yes.
Well, how nice.
Can't beat the marketing.
They'll be so happy up there. All right. Now, I guess we're going to go back to the, I don't see that there's anything else but a further discussion of what we started off with, which was the zoning proposal.
Right.
And, and, you know, and whether or not anyone thinks of anything else that should be on in--
I have some ideas for zoning, but they would all be for October, not May.
Bill?
I have one for May. It's updating the zoning map.
Oh, yeah, we've been needing to do that.
We really do because we found several mistakes in it.
Well, you say they're mistakes, but they're changes from what was original.
They're really not changes, they're a, the original plan was done by draftsman. When the draftsman did it, they were pretty exact. When we took from the draftsman to AutoCAD, some of those lines actually changed. And there is no, if you look at our map now, it says that it was last approved by town meeting in 1995. And if you look at the map, it says updated by, from May 2002. But what happened in May 2002 was that we put in the overlay districts and we never put the overlay districts on the map. But the map says it was updated as of May 2002. All it was is it was created in AutoCAD and the AutoCAD isn't correct.
So you have to correct the errors in translation from the draftsmanship to the AutoCAD--
Yes.
And then you have to put in the overlay districts.
Yes.
All right.
Well, I have a question.
Yeah?
Well, for one thing, I don't know what AutoCAD is.
It's a, it's a software system that was used to draw the lines within the map itself.
You don't use ArcGIS?
We will use ArcGIS. We will do it--
That would be preferable, yeah.
We will do it with parcel data.
Yeah.
Which, with what we've been doing for the last week is working on that parcel data, trying to refine that parcel data. Between now and the, the public hearings, we will really be refining that parcel data so that we get a much, much more accurate plan. And it's one that we can then use correctly. We'll identify the, the specific spots. In the submittal for the new plan, we will identify where all of those changes are so that we can--
The corrections or the errors, yeah.
Go back and state where the errors are so that nobody gets, as you're saying, we're changing zoning.
When AutoCAD, when did that plan get prepared?
2002.
And it was just prepared and no one ever approved it? Did town meeting approve the AutoCAD?
No.
So the, the current map is still, that town meeting has approved, is still the one done by the draftsman?
The one, so the AutoCAD is a--
But we don't have that map.
Why not?
In 1995, when we don't have, we have--
Why?
Because they moved on to 2002 and that's what--
But we should still have a copy?
I don't know why. I don't know why, I just--
No one has a zoning map from 1995?
I bet, I know someone who does.
Oh.
I'm going to guess that the guy whose name this room, the guy whose this room is named after probably has a copy of it.
He probably does, and I've got some old reports.
Mr. Duffy probably does too.
Yeah.
Mr. Duffy actually showed me where that draftsman's plan was, which is what I've been using to go back and, and truth what's on the other.
Yeah, but if we had the 1995 plan, we would then have the official version to compare it with.
Yep.
Right.
Which would be good since it was, in fact, adopted by town meeting and therefore it is the zoning map.
And in fact, once you translate the AutoCAD into ArcGIS, you're going to have to do another check to make sure that there was no inadvertent loss of data when you go from one to the next.
Certainly are, there are losses and changes.
Yeah.
And we have to identify each of those parcels. We know that, we're doing that. The part of the problem is that that draftsman plan doesn't have a date on it. There is no running date. So we know what it is, but--
Who was the, was Aaron Henry, that was well before. Was Bolt Tanner?
I'm not pointing to--
Are you assigning blame?
I don't know.
Good answer.
All right, well, we're going to find the plan because it is the plan. I mean, it's what we have to start working with, not what you may have found that doesn't have a date on it.
But I think Bill's point, and it's a good one, is that we do need to bring something to town meeting that is correct and updated.
Well, I don't disagree with that. But we have to be sure that when we bring it to town meeting, that we've got the--
The correct map, yeah, I would agree.
That we're doing the right thing here. In other words, we don't want to, if AutoCAD is full of errors, we shouldn't be using AutoCAD as our standard. I don't think. So Brian, you're going to find the 1995 zoning map?
Happy to email Mr. Cronin and inquire if he has a copy of that map.
Well, we will, we will see. In any event, maybe he's watching. John?
John, do you have-- Under other business, just quickly, I gave an extension to our master plan team to get the final plan to us at the end of December. So I had a few things--
December 30th, but we're going to probably need--
You'll need time to review it, yes.
Time to review it.
So we would have a great vote probably sometime in January, so.
You can have a little time on December 30th to show us the goldbound copy.
Sounds like a plan.
All right.
Ask if anybody else has, can get to Tufts at 4:30 tomorrow?
For what?
Oh, that's actually a good point. So the Tufts students, you remember, they're looking at East Milton Square and as their project this semester, and they are having a presentation at 4:30 tomorrow. I unfortunately cannot go because of a work commitment. But Bill, you're planning on going?
Cannot?
No.
The selectmen, the 40B hearing is 5 o'clock tomorrow.
Oh, Bill, yeah, you would have to be here for that.
So the appeal is based on--
So Ed--
Who are they presenting to?
Want to go to Tufts?
They're presenting to their professor and to Daphne, but they would also have been presenting to us.
Can you go?
I can't go because I, I have been invited to join the selectmen.
Also makes a big difference.
Emily too is going.
To discuss--
Emily junior.
I have been invited to join the selectmen to discuss the warrant. And apparently there are some people who had points about certain articles in the warrant, some of which were initiated by this board.
That's until 7 o'clock, though.
Ah.
I understand that, but I'm not going to go across town to Tufts after seeing what the traffic looked like today because I might never get back.
Does the red line go to Tufts?
I actually endorse that.
Yeah, really? I've been caught with that traffic stuff. Sorry?
Does the red line go up that far?
No, it's going to be the green line, isn't it?
It's the red line, yeah.
Red line goes to, to Somerville and then it's only a couple of blocks from--
Doesn't, isn't the green line extension going to go to Tufts?
In a couple of years.
Not before tomorrow.
$3 billion and 20 million, it'll get up to Tufts.
I, I did suggest that at some point they come and make a presentation to us here, so we'll see if we can arrange that.
All right, well, that's--
I'll talk to Christine tomorrow.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Sweet talk.
So I, I did tell the selectmen that if one other member wanted to join me at their meeting to discuss the warrant, that would be fine, but--
I'll be in Tufts, I'll be at Tufts.
Okay. All right. So now let's get back to, to where we started. This is sort of, this is--
This is a circular meeting.
Sort of good.
Love it.
Now, Marion, why don't you join us? You've, you've told us about your zoning, you've told us that what you gave us has been revised. You have not given us the revision.
I actually, it didn't get distributed, but it was submitted and I think I sent a copy to you, Alex.
So we would get a chance to review that before the--
We have to keep, I have to keep that copy on lock, but then you can have it.
No, I mean, that's fine. That's fine. I, I, you know, I reviewed it and I-- You know, we've got a number of things. We've got the Pepsi plant, which is about 20, 25 acres, which would be a big redevelopment if it were--
Mayor may not want to apply.
What?
Which in one consideration would be whether we want it to limit it only to businesses and residency and residence B districts so it wouldn't account for the large property, which will--
Well, all right. So you don't have the best, you've got the Solomond of Yard, you've got Bench, you've got Metracas, you've got Two Tedeskes, you've got the Blue Hill Fitness store across from the school on Blue Hill Parkway, which used to be a drugstore or something. You have the, what used to be a drugstore across from the Pierce School.
Yeah, it's a medical office.
The medical offices now. You've got a bunch of other offices. I mean, our governor's counselor seems to have an office in a residential zone.
There's another one on Reed's Dale that used to be an office, I don't know if it still is, so--
Well, I mean, there was a dentist, there was a dentist there on, I mean, there are a number of doctors' offices in, in town, which would presumably qualify.
Or could qualify, yes.
They're mostly on, on permit, I believe. They're not pre-existing, non-conforming.
You've got the Nurse Race, you've got the Hendry's plant, you've got, because that has a residential, a residential component and a little bit of the Hendry's plant is in the residential zone.
So then part of the discussion would be how and whether to, whether at first and then how to limit.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying that there are a lot of disparate sites here that something could apply to. And you, it doesn't necessarily have to apply to these sites, but if it doesn't, then the site should be excluded because we don't want to zone sites that we don't want to zone.
Right, right.
Our types of sites. I mean, I think the Pepsi plant's a good example. 25 acres is probably something that would be--
You probably don't want to--
Something that would need to be contemplated under a bigger situ, a bigger process. Maybe it's a limiting of the acres--
Right.
Of a maximum acres that this could apply to. Hendry's certainly, I mean, I would want to see by law contemplate that the use has to have been active within the last two years, not non-conforming uses going back for all time that have been abandoned effectively. You know, Hendry's hasn't been operation, in operation for over a decade, so that--
Well, and then the other point is--
Seem to be disqualified.
Yeah. Is it a continuing use that we, as a town, might not want to continue, to their point in the original, in their original draft of limiting certain auto uses in residential areas? Do we want to do that? And is there anything else?
And who is, who is the "we" because--
"We" being the town as a whole.
Well, I understand. But you recall when we did the temple, neighborhood wanted input.
Yes.
And in fact, the neighborhood got input in what would the zoning be for that site? And it seems to me that if you take these other sites, you've got to, I mean, for instance, for instance, just for instance, the neighborhood might not want the Houston Avenue Tedeskes to be expanded with parking and a bigger thing because apparently the problem with the current one is just the youths hanging out. I mean, the building itself is quite presentable. I've been in there and shopped and it's a pleasant shopping experience. And, you know, the neighborhood might not want to have a bigger Tedeskes there.
So then we think about what's the process? Obviously it's some sort of overlay, so it's a special permit, so there's a hearing, maybe there's a limitation, so it could expand by one parcel but not five, you know, if they're going to, if we're going to allow some sort of parcel assembly, yeah. Or a certain percentage increase. But I think the fact that these businesses don't have either a real ability or incentive to make improvements is an important one because the, the business owners may want to make improvements, but look at what they would currently have to do in order to do that and just not be able to do that.
Success is, you know, they put some dough into there where that, that's quite a, quite a nice little building.
They do.
The Tedeskes there is, and you know--
I remember--
The parking lot next door is heavily used.
It's heavily used, but is that the highest and best use for that? Is it legal use? Yeah?
It may not be legal, but it is, it provides a wonderful service for that particular store.
But is it the highest and best?
And Success did it as a tenant.
Yeah.
Success did it, invested it as a tenant for, for its use. That tenancy is coming to an end. That site, that, that office may be vacant again for a period of time and is the next tenant going to invest?
And I'm really familiar with that site because I don't live that far from it. I remember when that, where Success was actually a pharmacy and was--
I remember when it was a wooden building.
Oh, really? Well, you definitely remember further back than I do, Alex.
You really want to say that?
This also seems to touch on some of the ideas we heard at the master plan level, whether it's local community market, whether it's alternative housing types. It seems to touch on a few of the points. So it, it seems to me that the-- So it seems to me that the proposal has, the bylaw has merit, but it certainly needs to be studied before this board could put it up as a, as a draft. When is the warrant?
It's usually the first Friday in January. So we would have to move quickly, yeah. January 5th, yeah.
So the thought would be, one thought would be to, the idea is to get it out there for process review, for dialogue, for hearings, to get people reacting and responding, because it's one thing to do an exercise in drafting and try to think through things and account for things, but there's always something else, and you're going to want to have that. And creating, putting something forward that's going to generate that type of response, I think is important. I think it's an important discussion for the town to have. And it may mean that the real opportunity to enact this type of a bylaw would be October as opposed to May.
Well, and here's the thing, as I said earlier, I've got a bunch that I'm thinking about for October, most of them coming out of the master plan. I need to refine them, so suddenly, you know, October comes around and there's 20 zoning articles, is a bit much. This has actually been one of my highest priorities, so, because, you know, these are problems. So if it comes, if we start this and start refining, it goes to May or goes to October, whichever, but this is one of the ones I was thinking about for October. So I was kind of happy when I saw it in our packets.
To Ned's point, I would, I would think that there's some merit to seeing this, from a citizen's standpoint, perhaps, hit the May town meeting so that you can hear the public input.
Yeah.
Hear where the concerns are, and have this pushed back to planning board for further review, for discussion in October.
Yeah, except that process isn't one that town meeting is fond of. You know, when it comes to town meeting, the general perception is that it should be ready to be either approved or denied. Sending it back to the planning board in many quarters is viewed, frankly, as the planning board has failed at their job to bring something that town meeting can approve. And the May town meeting.
I'm suggesting it wouldn't be submitted by planning board.
Well, but the May town meeting is, you know, the idea has been, it really needs to focus on the budget, which in certain past years has been very contentious. And then to load up town meeting with the budget plus something that was put forward mostly for discussion is not necessarily reviewed well.
So is this something we could have a community meeting for?
Yes, now, we could do that.
That would be, I think, to Ned's point, I think hearing the concerns.
Yes.
Well before the warrant is due for October, so that we can contemplate those in our discussion, and it doesn't get sent back to the planning board in October, would be, would be important.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that at all. I think the idea of maybe, especially with some of the other potential zoning coming out of the town meeting, the idea of maybe holding some sort of planning board-sponsored discussion session or sessions in the spring, giving us something to work on to October, so it's already had a public vetting before it even comes through our formal public hearing process, I think that could work out really well. This could be one of them, because I, you know, I think as we bring things forward from the master plan, keeping that public process going before it hits our formal process makes a lot of sense, and I think we'd get more out of that.
Yeah, I also think, just in light, with respect to that, you get from May town meeting, and town meeting sort of goes, takes that big, deep breath, and all of a sudden, it's July.
Yeah.
And you're really not going to do much.
It's hard to hold public hearings in the summer, yeah.
It's hard to have a public hearing in the summer. You file something that hits for the first week of August that gets on the October town meeting warrant.
Yeah.
And you have a short window of time in there to hold your public hearings.
Yeah.
So extending out that opportunity for legitimate public input, I think, is important.
Yeah. I mean, what I'd rather do is start in January and say, look, these are the five or six or whatever it is, things that we're taking to October. What are we interested in pursuing? What are we not interested in pursuing this year? And some of this will be done by the implementation committee once it gets going, but at least for our process, then we can do those public discussions in the spring, have the texts ready to go for the summer, and have the public, formal public hearing in September, so, August or September. And I think that works out really well as a process, so.
Sure you don't want to go with Alex tomorrow and make that same explanation to the selectmen so his time is cut in half?
Alex, you can, you can totally present that as your own words if you want, and you're done.
Well, I, I, I think that, you know, the condo element of this particular proposal, I mean, it's, once again, it's, you're going to do a business, but it's going to be driven by condos.
Yeah.
And so the, the committee chaired by Brian and me would seem to be the perfect, and with two participants sitting at the end of the table, it would seem to be the
Good forum for, I agree with that.
And I assume that you guys were looking at bringing something to October rather than May, as far as the condo.
We're not going to be ready for May.
May.
Okay.
Sure.
So then that can work out with what you're doing, so.
I just make a recommendation as we, as we're thinking about this, you know, you're talking about the ways of looking at the different sizes of the density, or different densities for the different districts. And, you know, rather than maybe targeting a specific square footage, is there a formula we can come up with similar to the N minus formula for the, for the condo that exists today that might get us somewhere, that would allow an equitable ratio for the different districts? It's just something to think about. I can think about it as well.
That was the, that was the initial thought that we had, was to try and, you know, if you applied, you know, we said, I threw 1,000 square, one unit per 1,000 square feet in initially because that's what it came out of, the Central Avenue Business District. And then as we thought about it, it was like, oh, wow, that's a lot of units. That can get to be a real lot of units, even in a Residence C zone, if you have 9,000 square feet, nine units would overwhelm the lot, so. So then I thought, well, we thought, okay, maybe 2,000 would be a good number. And then, but you couldn't use that in a Residence B zone or a Residence A zone, because all of a sudden, that.
Well, in reality, some of the, some of the other, some of the other language you have in here with regard to parking and height, and some of that's going to just control it anyway, because you can't fit all the, you can't fit nine units and a retail store and the parking that's required and the open space. So there's a, there's a mechanism that's going to control it anyway.
But there is, but yes, there is, we should come up with a better formulaic approach to.
Actually, what would be helpful is to know what the parcel sizes are for the parcels that we're considering, and that way, we can do a couple of fit studies and see actually what, you know, if we're looking at doing these particular ratios on this particular parcel, what would actually fit? And that allows us to test some of these assumptions, because what we don't want to do is have town meeting approve the zoning, have somebody come in, apply for it, and then find out it doesn't actually, you know, the ratios don't actually work. So, and since we have a limited number of parcels and we know what their sizes are, we can test that out.
We have a limited number of parcels to a certain extent. I mean, this, the way it's written now would allow assemblage, so.
Well, that's another thing we're going to look at, yeah.
There's other things we have to talk about here. One of them is, do we want it to be existing acreage as of the town meeting?
Right.
Do we want it to be existing use as opposed to abandoned use? I think those are all important points.
Right. Do we want to allow assemblage, and if so, by how much?
Exactly.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable. When it comes to the public meetings in the spring, I can help organize the facilitation of those. We've done that before.
Well, that would be, that would be.
Well, your committee is working on the nitty-gritty.
Well, no, I think the committee, I think the committee, we will certainly be discussing this in January. And so I think the sense of the planning board, Ned, is you would, you should, you should rest on your oars for a little bit, and we will, we will make a dash for the October finish line.
We will bring this up at the condo meeting in January and.
No, I think that's, I think that's fair. I came out of the condo meeting the other night, I'd been thinking about this for a little while. I came out of the condo meeting the other night, and, well, it actually had something that I handed out that night. I was thinking that here's something from a general application purpose that we should start to talk about. So, you know, if October is the right time, because we have a good amount of time to vet public issues and concerns for the spring, then that's fine. And, and, look, if it's going to get done, it ought to be done because it's done well and done right.
Yeah.
And the fact that the board seems to be interested in moving forward in something like that is helpful, you know.
And I think we could probably do a series of meetings that cover all of the legislation that we're looking at for October, so, and do it as a follow-up from, look, we just did this master plan. These things are coming out of it. This would certainly be one of it. Please come to these sessions to talk about these initiatives and pull it together. And that actually would give people, I mean, I'm thinking two or three meetings, that would give people time to think about it. If they can't make one of the meetings, they would be able to make one of the others, and we'd really be able to get some support from that, so, as far as input from people.
Whether it's ready or good or bad, if you have a draft, people will react to it.
Absolutely.
My recommendation is that you work, you have, you take drafts and you, you make them available, and you say you want to work on it, and you'll get plenty of, I think you will get a lot of, you'll get a lot of response.
Yes.
I think on this one in particular, we haven't thought of every site that exists. I mean, there's some places that are tucked away. Only people who live in the neighborhood know about, but they are pre-existing nonconforming uses.
Yeah.
And, you know, every, you really have to, we, whether it's our, you know, as people talking about this draft, whether it's our responsibility, we'll certainly try to do that. But it is the town's responsibility to make sure if any zoning like this for a site, a type of site, a pre-existing nonconforming use, business use, is a type of site.
Right.
That you know every single existing site, because you have to see what it might do if one were able to, if someone were able to come in with an application to that site. And if it doesn't work, then you need to rewrite it so that it excludes that, or maybe it doesn't work at all. But, you know, I'm suggesting that maybe it will work, but it needs a lot of testing, and it's easier, well, I find it easier to do that if I'm looking at a draft, however deficient it might be. And you can make progress if you do it that way.
Right.
You do, you keep rewriting, and maybe it's completely different by the time you're done, maybe throw it up, you know, because you can't do it. You're not going to find out unless you have something to look at and keep.
Yeah, and I think your initial draft provides a good basis for discussion. I'm looking forward to the second draft. As you say, you get people to react to it and find out where the, there's always a flaw in a draft and where the concerns are, and I think we can do that.
We've, I've asked my town matters just to try to cover the condo committee as much as possible, so that these type of proposals will be known in the community and hopefully reported on.
And I will, I will send the latest draft to Emily so she can distribute it to the condo committee. I'll get it in advance, and then maybe we can think about who else ought to get their eyes on it.
And once the final master plan is complete, I'll come up with a list of what I think would be appropriate for the October meeting, and then we can winnow through and see what we want to bring forward at this point and what we're not, you know, what we think should be come forward in a later year.
All right. Well, it's 8 o'clock.
All right.
Ed?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn.
All in favor? Peter and Dur.